Roll call.
Mr. Plow?
I'm here.
Mr. Plow? Is that Bernie? Is that Bernie? Mr. Johnson, Nelson?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jarvis?
Here.
Ronnie Burleson. Ronnie Burleson's here. That's okay, he did a good job. Okay, we're going to move right on to the presentation and we will do the rest after the presentation.
Again, my name is Joseph Pecaro, I'm the Principal of Pecaro, being an architect. We're the architects that are developing the plans for construction that's anticipated to be occupied September of 2020. With me tonight is Alan Barnett, he's back there. He's our project manager for this job and he's been working very diligent with us on the development of that, this product with the staff. And also Tony DeNorsia, who is our Director of Educational Programming. Past Superintendent in Bertha County for about 110 years. So he's an important factor in our firm. Not only as architects, but we have an educator on staff that reviews the plans and the details to assist and help in our design of schools. Just a little quick background, our firm, basically, we do public schools throughout the state of New Jersey. And 85 to 90% of our work is public schools throughout the state. We started working, and as you know, there were plans developed for a junior high school to be located on the site that's boarded by Marion and Page. If you recall the previous plan, the entrance to the school facility was in this location. There was an entrance in this location, parking, and then an exit back onto Marion. The basic school was in this area and there was a large section of the classroom wings that actually came over the drop-off. As you're very familiar with the site, the area that's located in this location is pretty flat and it's on the plateau. And then just a mere 30 feet down is the other area where you have the roller ramp that's currently located in this location here. When we were hired, we kind of did an evaluation of the site, the access, and the logistics of it. And we noticed very early that there's two 72-inch water lines that run along Marion Avenue, basically north to south. Or this is actually, north is in this direction, so let's call this north, east, and west, so it runs east-west. We found very quickly that due to the elevation, the location, and the logistics of actually going over those pipes and/or possibly moving them, Alan would be retired by the time we got those approved. I didn't say maybe because I'm sure at the time, but Alan would be retired. So we then looked at, can we develop a plan that meets and exceeds your requirements for the new junior high school? We did not want to come up with a plan, a modification, that would be 10 okay or 80% okay. We wanted to make sure that it was 110% from the original plan. And if we told you that it didn't work without accessing off of Marion, we would have been the first one to tell you. The good news is, we feel that with the access off of Page in this location, and coming in off of, this is Fourth Street or Sparta Road, depending on what map you look at, coming in this location, and there was a traffic study that it's actually, we believe, actually more beneficial coming off of this street than this road on Marion coming off of here. So we've kind of restructured the way we come in and circulate on the site and come out. So basically, what we did is we looked at the opportunities that the site presents itself with, not only looking at the problem. We always try to look at the opportunities and try to enhance those things. So you have a very large flat area, you have a residential area, Page that would come in, you have a wide access area that's belong, that the school owns. Coming here, and then we would have a circulation and all the parking kind of clustered in this location. We also have an access road that loops around, that you can have buses that would have direct access and drop off to the school. And it's directly disjarring off the doors, on the sidewalks, EVA compliant, all those things. And if you notice, it was a little difficult on this graphic, but we have all the parking lanes here, the buses and the very wide lane that comes along here. When cars come in, they can access, they don't have to actually cross in front of or alongside of the buses. So vehicle traffic and the buses don't have to mix. Because you always will get parents dropping off, not always on the time you want, so we wanted to make sure that the conflict of buses and vehicular traffic is minimal. And I believe that we've accomplished that very well. We also wanted to have a second means of egress, as you do with any road. You have two ways out in case of an emergency, that's just in case one is involved and you can't get out, there's always another way. But the same holds true for a site, fire or access, emergency access. So we have the main entrance and exit out of this location. And then you have kind of a very interesting intersection along Ridge, which is basically 17, it's a state road. We have your property, your property extends out to this area, you have a cool kind of side house that would be demolished. We would then be able to run this as either just an emergency exit and emergency entrance in. Or we believe that based on the location, you could have right-hand turn in only and right-hand turn out. You don't want to have to make a left-hand turn coming this way or this way. We feel that that would be an entrance for deliveries, but we're discussing that with the town, with the borough, to see how they want that handled. Either way it works, you can bring in, you can have trucks in here, deliveries, garbage, everything's located here, and then they can come out. Or they can come in here and then out this way. So it's just a dial-off, a normal dial-off, a traffic access, things like that, but now the news and how they want to put it back. But in either case, it works very well. So what we did is we also looked at some of the other benefits of the site. Again, the pottery, there's shale underneath, so it varies in different locations, so you have very high ground capacity. And then you basically have your drop-off that basically occurs in this location. And virtually, the elevation difference from here to here is approximately 30 feet. From the original plans, you relocated roller ramp into this location. And then there's a soccer field in this area, and then a modified crossfield that would go over, based on the size and the limitations of the square meters that we have. So there's going to be a retaining wall on here, and we have bleachers that would be located here for spectators to form in our vision of the soccer field. You then have, you have tremendous views from that elevation of Manhattan. And if you look at the views from this location, you have Central Park. If you look this location, you have the Empire State Building. And if you look at this location, you have the Freedom Tower. So within a 28-degree viewpoint, you have spectacular views of Manhattan. So this is the organization of the site. We then also looked at the solar orientation, because this is a state-of-the-art 21st century school. The elements that were used to design it, the materials and mechanical systems, are all state-of-the-art and energy-efficient. The orientation of the building is a very important factor in reducing the energy consumption of the building, just by the way you look at it in terms of placing certain parts of the building, access and windows. So you have an east exposure here, you have a northern exposure here, west and south. So we can kind of place also for a lot of different factors. We have the three-story classroom wing in this location to basically kind of take advantage of the views. We have a lot of the mixing space and cafeterias, again, off of Plaza, you know, taking the views in. And you have your gym, the large spaces that are on the north side, which is a buffer to the cold area in the wintertime and also in summer.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I just want to ask about the, originally the view, the east, obviously that's with the sun up. I know with that reason, basically, classes are now, sun comes relaxing in.
Yeah.
They're in the range of kind of blocking from...
Yeah, we'll, I'll go over that when we get to the plan and roll, how that's done. So we have, we have the orientation here, and then we have the entrance in this location. So if we go to the first floor plan, this is the entrance off of Page as you come in, bus drop-off, vehicle parking. We have parking all on the back end of this, and the main entrance is located here. This is your security control point. We have the security office located here, so you come to the best of you. We call it a man lock. You come in, you can't go anywhere else unless you are booked in or escorted in the rest of the building past this line. And that's where the new requirements are for your security office. You then have your overall administration wing in this location, and that also includes your nursing office. So all the functions that go on are located in here. The man trap mess of you, then you come in and you have access to the administration. If we look at the large block areas of the school, we have the auditorium. And this school is designed for the capacity of approximately 700 students?
600.
650 students, based on the enrollment projections and the grade levels that you've launched, we house in here. We have a large auditorium that will seat approximately 700 seats at one time. So that's adjacent to this location. The back area where you have your stage, dressing rooms, offices, storage rooms. We then placed the music rooms, two large music rooms in the back of the stage, so the music rooms have access from the car to the back portion of the stage. And we also point this to find art wing where we have your art room, your kiln room, your storage, all in this location. So you have that with a very easy circulation around the auditorium for easy access around it. If you continue in a northern direction, we then place strategically the cafeteria and kitchen, food preparation, in this location. And we need two access points for that. We need to get direct access for deliveries, all the things that have to get discharged. And we also have to have it accessible to the cafeteria where the students would be actually eating during the day. So we've located it here, and the cafeteria, the certain line, is basically set up like a food court. We have multiple stations for different types of menus. We are working currently with our food service consultant as well as our food provider. And we're collaborating, going through together how you're functioning now, district-wide, and the requirements of the kitchen. So you have a direct connection where trash and deliveries, trucks can come in here, load here, storage, freezers, refrigerators, the kitchen, and then the serving area located here. We also have a large storage room, and you can see from the size of it, storage is something that you should get eliminated from plans, due to budget and other things. We wanted to make, schools today need large amounts of storage. We wanted to make sure that there was large enough storage sufficient for the entire school, we have our areas as well. We then have the required mechanical space to service the building. And then you see, if you continue further north, then we have the next large bulk space, which is the, what we call a two-station gym. You have a large gym area with bleachers on both sides. You have a full-size regulation basketball court. And then you have two half courts going in the opposite direction on this side and this side. And then with replacement of the structure, we also have a curtain that comes down, that you can separate the two halves, so you can have two physi, here it is on, glasses at the center. It gives the district more flexibility and use of the large gym. And then immediately adjacent to that, we have the coaches offices, visible to the gym, the control, and then we have the locker rooms for that. And then we have an alternate for basic pricing for the auxiliary gym and the weight room, and that's located here. Where we're doing it as an alternate, just so we get separate prices as the contractors will prepare. So then if you go to the Eastley side, we have a two-story, three, I'm sorry, a three-story classroom wing. And they're basically designed that you can function in different ways. You can function where you can have ninth grade on all four. You have each grade level on each floor. Or you can mix them up, right? That's totally up to you, because what we find, in all the years over the done schools, things change. Things change constantly. So we don't want to pigeonhole a lot from district in to a plan that only works in one teaching mode. We wanted to develop it in many, many different types of environments. So what we've done is we have your academic classrooms, we have your science areas, we have the new state-of-the-art stem lamps. And we'll show some pictures of other projects that we've done that would be similar, to get an idea of what these spaces look like and feel like. We also have common areas, the method of teaching where students are able to pull out of the classroom and function in these learning environments, which were the old corridors, now they're common spaces. And then we've also looked at, in terms of the future, if population keeps growing, right now, based on the population projection, the world is off. Well, you don't know what's going to happen 10 years from now, 15 years from now, and those 10, 15 years happen very quickly. What we did is we provided space in this location that you could put approximately nine classrooms on top of this wing on the side. It can be built virtually without disrupting the remaining part of the school. So you could have excess capacity, if the addition grows, or if the population grows here, you can put that addition on with relative ease. Again, not to handcuff everybody or pigeonhole some confusion. Then you have kind of a, what we'll call is a large common area or atrium, this is a two-story space. And that would be where the cafeteria would be built. And then another space that's kind of in this large area, which would be the culinary leg. And that would be kind of a premier area that would have access to this for many, many different functions. And then we have plenty of circulation space around the larger areas, the mixing areas. And we have the, you know, the toilet, the group of toilets, where you can close this section off and access the gym for night use, the rec department, so they would have access to the gym and the toilets without having to open up the entire school. So that's kind of the general layout, flow, and organization of it. And if we look at the upper floor, the classroom wing is very similar. And then we have the media center, or the old libraries, would be basically on the second floor above the administration area. And this area is connected to the classroom wing with a bridge. Because as you come into the new facility, you have a two-story high entrance wing. You then have a bridge that looks over that, coming into this large common area where the cafeteria and many different functions would happen in this two-story space. Then you have access to the upper level through your staircases. And they're designed for not only the egress in an emergency, but also the flow of students. Students don't use the elevator to get up and down the building, they use the stair. And their size to accommodate the flow of students up through the different floors, if that's how you want to structure the classes. And we also have an interesting element, and we'll show some pictures of this, we call it the learning stair. It's a stair, it's quite a large stair that kind of comes from the lower level of the first floor. And it has a stair that comes up the side, and then these are kind of platform windows. So it's like a lecture space. So the lecture space opens out into this area where you can have different functions going on. Students can eat on these areas, collaborate in large groups, small groups. They can have impromptu discussions and presentations. And then we're looking at these large walls here to have large screen monitors and TVs that the students can view. And these we've run constantly, you're not showing video videos obviously, but we're showing, you know, different news broadcasts, other things, other videos that students are creating. And then the third level is, again, the, similar to the lower level floor plans. And then we have kind of a maker space that's located here that opens out to the views. And we've also placed certain administration functions on that level. So we would have, for example, the assistant principal or vice-principal located here just for control. That's, it's better to have them spread out within the building than all in the central hall. So we've kind of looked at that, we've run over it with superintendent staff to share our experiences and our recommendations, just even if that's something you want to do, and we've incorporated those elements into the plan. This is, this is kind of the architecture of the language, and we're working on the elevations as we're developing the construction documents. And we're going to be next week with a series of different options, materials to review. But in terms of the language, what we're looking at, we're kind of, we're looking at brick color with the use of glass. And again, these are, the glass is tinted, and it has a reflectivity to it, to eliminate a lot of the glare that comes in from the sun at the different angles that incorporate. We're looking at using certain metal panels, again, to kind of create a very fresh, new, vibrant architecture to the building. Something that is not going to be dated, that's going to last for 100 years and not say, oh, that was a 2007 thing, but you can do a lot of time to do it beside of this. So we've kind of kept it in a fashion that reflects the environment and also some of the view affecting things. So we have certain areas where we will do these metal panel walls, and that would be, if we go back to the plan, that would be something that we incorporate on this side. And we also have an outdoor learning area in this location off of the department space. So the use of brick, the use of the color, the plaza area, if you kind of envision the cafeteria area coming out to the plaza area before you have a retaining wall that drops down, we would create balance there, railings, and we would anticipate putting a probably eight, eight to 10-foot high fence along that side. But you would have an area that would feed out into the space that would be on the loose in the side. So you can just see, again, this is not going to be your building, but it's kind of the elements that we incorporate in terms of the language. Very clean, crisp, easy to maintain, a lot of use of glass in some of the circulation areas. And this is, this is the large stair that I was talking about. So you have a, you have a two-story space, you have the steps coming up, and then you have, it just kind of joins every other step, and you have these platforms. And the students at this facility use it constantly. The students care off of classrooms, they use this, and they actually use it to eat here. So you can kind of see some of the, and this is a large media wall that constantly plays and sometimes just there and you use it. So those are just a few little pictures. We're also looking at, in the corridor space, we keep calling it corridor, but it's really an education space. Schools devote so much area for circulation to corridor, and they only use 9.2% of the time during the day. It's a lot of real estate, it costs you just as much to build a corridor as it does a stem lamp. You know, right now it's $350. Take one square foot, 12 by 12, put $350 on each square, that's how much a building costs. So if we're going to devote a large area for circulation in corridor, we want to, we make it a little wider and more interesting, so you can actually use it as a functional space. So in order to make it functional, we put locker boards on the outside. We have, you know, some glass coming in from the corridor to the classroom curves for control and connection. So we're looking at a lot of these different areas. These are some of the cafeterias that we've done. You know, the new bright, vibrant, large spaces, some common areas that you would have as we described. The two-story space, in your, in your case, this side would be glass with what we call eyebrows that actually look at the angle of the sun coming in and the cast shadow on the glass instead of the sun coming directly in. These are some examples of stem lamps for typical classrooms. The use of very interested lighting, exposing, the mechanical system, the ductwork, the use of vibrant pieces of color, and furniture systems. So no longer do you have the old classrooms with, you know, thirty desks lined up in a row, that's the old faculty room. It's very, very exciting to design our schools today. It almost makes you want to go back to school. So these are just some examples of some of the projects that we've worked on. Some in our office call this the target, with the circles, you know, right? So it's just, you know, some of these spaces don't cost anymore, it's really just paying attention to detail. If you pay attention to the detail, you get a very, very vibrant environment. That's it?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
So here are, so that's where we are. We're developing now the construction documents in order to be on schedule for bidding. One of the things tonight we needed was the signatures from the board president superintendent for the resubmission to the State Department of Education for what they call a schematic approval. You've done that before, which was approved, but that was for a different arrangement. And due to some of the restraints on the site, we had to modify the building. So now, we kind of, we've discussed it with the state, calling it Ron, the State Department of Education, explained to them what things we were modifying and changing, and they're perfectly okay with that. They just wanted to get the paperwork done, so. Thank you for arranging a special meeting tonight, because we want to get everything down as quickly as possible. Our job is to tell you we need something and bug you. And I'm okay bugging you, if you have the evidence, yell it out. But we want to keep, we want to make sure everybody's on schedule, as we know it is. So if you have that tonight, we'll deliver it tomorrow, just so we get that approval, so we can continue our development of the documents. And I'd just like to say, we are extremely excited to be part of this state of the art facility. We design everything that, how we want to send mine, get to, to be designed. And, you know, we're very, very so far, according to the elements, and the work with the staff, and their vision, we're extremely excited for this facility. So with that all, any questions? So with that all, any questions? Be happy to answer them. Sure.
Can you talk about time? What is your idea in the time of the bidding process?
We're looking at possibly November, November, December to bid.
Okay. How long is that process?
In Garrett, it's usually a two-month process. For a building of this size, we want to give Garrett's contractors and the municipality looking at how we want to structure that. Cause of the roof, the leak, because the families kind of handle that. But typically you want to give a contractor five weeks to do all the bidding. That also goes through, you know, any questions that they have, there's walkthroughs, meetings with them while we're developing the plans. And then we take the bids, then we review the bids. We analyze them with the ordinance, we look at it and then there's a bid analysis that's prepared, reviewed with your board determining. And then you make an award. And usually that process is almost a number of three or four bids accepted. So it's about a two-month process. And then you have an award. And the contractor, they're rewarding, they're rewarding. And then they have contracts, coordination, and then they start, their clock starts when they're the date that the board says, yep, these people are live and we go. And then you have, we're anticipating, we basically have a twenty-four-hour window for construction. And that's, that's short. You know, the twenty-four months of that. Yeah, we kind of, we looked at the size of the room and based on our experience with some of the contractors that we've been bidding on. It's in that timeframe. That also includes time that you would have to do what's called punch lists. Once they say they're finished, they're not finished. Yeah, okay, so you know, it's, so I have to bite out of the phone a few times. So, and we don't wait till we end, we constantly look at the things and make sure. So then you also have the whole window for signing. You have to shake it out, you have to pull in, you know, there is, so you don't have time. That, that, I don't know if it's ever made, no, you won't, I understand that you won't. I didn't make the board on that. Okay. Yeah, it's a few miles on.
That wall is right against the parking spot. That's all we can replace that wall.
Yeah, the outside of there, we've gone through all of that. Whether, yeah, well, we have to see, the equator is still there, it's on, no, it's on your front. So we have to, we have to kind of locate that. But that's being handled always similarly. Is there a question?
For your presidency, you didn't mention any ADA demand. Department of Labor, Department of Defense, Department of Homeland Security, can you have?
Great, great question. Great, great question. To give me if we're not kind of elaborating on that because we kind of take it to grant, everything we do new has to be 100% accessible for veterans with disability access. So yes, there's your side access, your drop-off, your ADA sidewalks, entranceways are all, meet that requirement. Your entrance, any grade difference meets the slope factor. We have an elevator in this location here. And it's basically, everything else is one-story except this area which is two stories. So either an injured child, a broken leg, or a person with disabled, they would be able to use that elevator. These stair towers are for emergency. And what we, what's required today is called an area refuge. That the stair landings are large enough that if somebody's in a wheelchair in an emergency, they go into the protected stair tower. The stair tower is rated at a higher level than the rest of the building. And that is an emergency call button. So that's the way you can get somebody up in a wheelchair in an elevator. But when there's a fire, that elevator going up, has to go down to the first floor and shuts down. Only five personnel can move in. So we've developed all of our safety requirements in the manner of stair towers. So everything, seating requirements, the desks, the chairs, all come forward.
How bad is it to do that, feel there's going to be forty, thirty people up and then you, are you, for injured persons or?
We looked at cattle sheets, but that didn't go too far. In the, we're developing and now, we've been having weekly meetings with all of our consultants and also with council consultants. We kind of, we looked at, we discussed that actually a week and a half ago with them. It was kind of the major concern from day one and what we're looking at doing is from this plaza area, so you have access from the doors out here coming around or right from here. We have a stair, exterior stair, and we also have an exterior. When I say exterior, it's rated for durability, but it's kind of enclosed. So a student can come here, go on the elevator, come down, have access to the lower tiers of the train stands. And also have access to the lower. There's also parking along here. So even if someone parked here during an event, they would then have access. And then they would also have access up to the school for access to this thing. So there's an honorable mention.
Anyone want to connect to anybody?
I'll hear it all right.
I'm not sure whether the board is ready or they're ready to keep students in for rush. Because anybody who's at a long time period on the reg road or big daddy at that time is going to be coming. They, someone that who just come in, gone out of the pool. So I'm pretty sure going to break these trees, break down these barriers, break these trees.
Well, we sized the building to accommodate the entire population in only two large rooms. Some schools would be three or four. That's not our decision, but I can tell you that that area, the number of chairs and everything serves the entire population in two, two hundred.
And I can't say right now, who comes out, who comes out of the walls and wire and management. I have to look at the walls and perspectives. But we're certain that we should have everything to make it more exciting for them to stay in with, you know, within these more open environments. So that one becomes a little bit more social, a little less structured for them. And they want to stay in with their friends and these types of inviting areas. So, yeah, it's a great job.
I'd actually want to even want to. Is there a question?
All right, hi. What's happening with where the, where the, did Nathan is that store?
Okay, the gym is located in this location with the locker rooms and also the auxiliary gym and the waiting room. There's storage in here and there's also storage over here.
And the lavatories, others?
Lavatories are all here.
And there's a built-in laundry, will you store things?
Yeah, there's toilets in the administration area on each level. There's toilets, boys' and girls' toilets, and also faculty girls'. We have a faculty resource room at each level, also control with, you know, team planning, things like that. And we also have an individual toilet that will be located on each level here. The bulk of the toilet capacities is all here because we have cafeteria, gym, wardrobe, all of this all is located. So we spread them out according to the number of students. All right, thank you very much.
Let's give it a go again. I think he did it, he did a tremendous presentation. You did all the talking, that's pretty tough. Especially taking the questions from Rich. We did a great job. We're moving on here to the public hearing on the meeting agenda. We didn't put a sign-up sheet here upfront. So if there's anyone that would like to comment or have something to say, come on up, state your name, address, and you're more than welcome. We'll flip the microphone back off. Anyone? Going once? Twice? Okay. Non-agenda items.
Any board member, any board member takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of new business. And so indicating now you have a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that items one to four be approved.
Second. Vocal.
Is it carried?
Four.
Mr. Thomas, four.
Four.
Jarvis, four.
Mr. Donald, four.
Mr. Girard, four.
Mr. Brown.
Four. Anyone, anyone out there, non-agenda items? One last time. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Susan wanted a big motion. Go ahead, say it.
Four favorites?
Where are your jerseys?